Good evening. I call this meeting to order. The October 8, 2018 work session for the York County School Board. And I hope everyone's back on track and maybe gaining some momentum after our temporary weather break that we had. But we're also keeping an eye on another storm that's coming. Hopefully that won't affect us if we're lucky. So we have several presentations this evening, and the first four relate to the strategic plan. So Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share about the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. Our first presentation, instructional coordinator, Mrs. Kristi Pika will provide an update on the division's progress toward the development of a K-12 math model, which is an objective under Goal One of the eight FY-1822 strategic plan. I'll turn it over to Ms. Pika.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will provide the strategic plan status update to the objective addressing the development of a K-12 math model listed under Goal One of the FY-1822 strategic plan. Goal One states that York County students will consistently demonstrate growth and excellence in the skills and knowledge needed to be productive citizens. As part of this goal, the objective that I will be updating you on tonight is the development of a K-12 math model. The division has developed and supported robust and research-based literacy models for K-12. With the evolution of the profile of Virginia graduate and the newly adopted 2016 mathematics standards of learning, it is important that we also provide aligned and research-based instructional models for our mathematics teachers. In 2016, the Board of Education adopted new math standards to support the profile of a Virginia graduate. Included within the standards is an increased focus on the five mathematical processing goals: communication, connection, problem-solving, representations, and reasoning. This is our timeline for developing and implementing a K-12 mathematics model, which will support the new standards. Over the next slides, I will go into more depth reporting on the progress of each of these goals. Our goals for the 2017-18 school year were to ensure the development of an aligned curriculum, form a math model committee, and draft a math model. During this school year, our focus is on garnering feedback from stakeholders on our draft of the math model to include all math teachers and administrators. With the feedback provided, we will then refine the math model and plan for professional development and resources needed. Our goal is to have a completed math model ready for implementation in the 2019-20 school year that will ultimately undergo ongoing programmatic evaluation and revision through the math leadership team. I'm happy to share with you this evening that all goals for the 2017-18 school year were met. The curriculum alignment goal was met through teams of teacher leaders, writing cross-walk curriculum aligned to the 2016 mathematics standards of learning for kindergarten through Algebra II TRIG during June of 2017. This summer, based on feedback from math leads and data, I was able to continue the work of our curriculum writers and finalize the mathematics updates in all curriculum and pacing guides to ensure full alignment to the 2016 mathematics standards of learning. The math model committee was formed in September of last year and met three times over the course of the year. The committee was comprised of experts from all 19 buildings across the division, including 21 teachers, three administrators, and five school board office representatives. This group received professional development, reviewed research, and drafted the math model. Specific outcomes from this meeting included the math model committee members collaboratively crafting a portrait of a K-12 math student, including how mathematics plays a role in the profile of a Virginia graduate. The committee also developed common beliefs and expectations regarding instruction that aligned to the 2016 mathematics standards of learning, the five mathematical process goals, and eight highly effective teaching practices for mathematics. The division has already started to support the components within the draft of our math model. With end-of-year funds, the school division was able to purchase a large number of math manipulatives, K-5, that will provide our students with concrete representation of progressive math concepts consistently throughout the school division. Additionally, funds were used to begin to support the integration of the process goals at the middle school level, including manipulatives and small group resources. To support our teachers, the division provided and will continue to provide professional development on a variety of math topics, including the new math process goals, number talks, small group instruction, and the use of the math manipulatives. A K-12 mathematics walkthrough tool was created and is being implemented to allow for progress monitoring and evaluation of the math model. Principals have received and will continue to receive job-embedded training on utilizing the mathematics walkthrough tool to identify the mathematical process goals. We also created the First Division Math Coach position, which will help support math instruction. As outlined in our timeline, our goal for this year are to elicit feedback from stakeholders, and this will be done by presenting the draft of the math model back to the committee for any additional revisions. These members will then share their work at their building and solicit feedback from school teams. Additional stakeholder input will be gathered to include administrators. After the members have solicited feedback, I will make final adjustments to the math model and continue to plan for professional development and research adoption of aligned instructional materials. Thank you, and I'll open it up for questions at this time.
I have one. Of the new math model, this is all just lesson plans, basically, for the teachers to teach. Are there any computer programs that you're looking at institute?
So when we finish the math model and we're looking for the aligned instructional materials, we will be looking at all modes of instructional materials, which would include also technology.
I just know that years ago, they tried some technology on a program that didn't work really well, and it just took the teacher away from teaching and just threw the kids right in front of the computer, and there was never any interaction with the teacher. So I just, I'm sure y'all will explore that, I know you will. But thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a great presentation.
It was great.
I'm always thinking numbers and way out. So when this fully implements and whatever the blueprint looks like and whatever, do you anticipate the need that may drive a budget impact for additional staff, for supporting staff, or staff-supporting students that find where we can identify students that need more help in areas of math? Will this open up something that needs to be opened and explored, but it could drive a budget impact?
The model itself, in all likelihood, would not drive that decision. We always have conversations about how do we support staff, particularly if we've got a school that needs additional support. Kristi does an amazing job. In the past, she's supported all 19 buildings and provided professional development, and so adding the math coach has been a huge addition, just one person, because then that means we have two individuals to support the buildings. But the math model in and of itself, other than the resources, the manipulatives that we've used end-of-year funds to purchase, you know, we could ultimately be looking for resources along those lines. Mr. Richardson, you asked about technology. Would we use technology in place of a teacher? It's unlikely that we would ever, but looking at those resources, could we eventually identify something that we don't currently have the funds? We could, but the math model really drives the instructional program.
I know that when we've done other models, it's helped us identify students who are struggling, and then we had to develop strategies to deal with that, and which was what we're all about, you know. So but thinking down the road, could this do that, have that same impact, more so than we already now identify students that struggle with math? Thank you.
It didn't seem to me that math was a struggle area, based on the, just, please, please let me finish. Based on the data, are there similar initiatives being done in other areas, particularly like English for students with disabilities and things of that nature? Something similar being done?
Yes. Yeah, we're doing a lot of work at the middle school level. Dr. Guy, if you want to talk about the work that we're doing with special education?
Yes. For English in general, we have a literacy model that has been developed and has evolved over the years with professional development. There's significant training, I think, which was shared in our last meeting that we're doing, particularly at the middle school level, where we're addressing
Co-teaching.
Co-teaching, and we're also addressing small group instruction.
Okay. That's great. Great presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Pika, for that presentation. Anybody have any other additional questions? Thank you very much. It was a great presentation. Appreciate that. So next, we have the strategic plan update on the objective in Goal Four relating to the superintendent's roundtable.
Yep, so I'll introduce myself. Happy to be here to present this information to you tonight. Let the presentation get going. All right, so this evening, I'm going to provide a brief update to an objective in Goal Four, which the division will foster effective partnerships with families in our community and promote positive relationships between and among staff, students, and families. So specifically, I will establish and maintain a business and civic community roundtable to establish mutual goals and opportunities for collaboration that support students' academic and personal success. So, board members, you'll recall, last year, we shared that we had a meeting with the E3 Group from Jim Noel, and E3 stands for engaging existing employers. So we met with a number of employers, and the driving question when we met with this group was, how can we work together to prepare young people for jobs and careers? So let me share a little bit with you. You've seen this document in front of you several times related to the profile of the graduate. We shared this information with them during that session. We also shared some information related to the strategic plan, and we conducted a scan, and I'll get into what that is in a minute. So on the screen before you, you'll see members of that group that met with us that day. Their names are on the left, and the businesses they represent are in the middle, and there's a second page to that as well. It's important to note that 10 of 16 career cluster areas were represented for that meeting. So what you have up there on the screen now is what's called a scan, and that's one of our Trigo analytical tools that we utilize in the school division. And basically, a scan is when you see the issues, clarify the issues, assess priorities, and name next steps. This is basically a summary of the priorities from that group, and I guess to put it in a nutshell, the priorities that surfaced from this were, they felt the need to increase the community's understanding of work readiness, connecting and informing parents, and building partnerships with, I should say, additional partnerships, because we have partnerships with our local businesses, but building some additional partnerships. So from that group, we formed what's called the Business Advisory Council, and you can see the names of the folks on the screen there. Dr. George is on that group, as well as Jeff Wasmur from the Board of Supervisors. There is, it's important to note that 11 of the 16 career clusters were represented in this group. So essentially, when we met with this group, numerous objectives have been developed in the strategic plan to provide greater emphasis on both the career exploration and workplace readiness components of the VDOE's profile of the graduate. So this is an example of some strategic plan objectives that relate to this. So the first one, complete an internship, mentorship, or job shadowing experience prior to graduation. Providing career awareness and exploration opportunities in designated grades at the elementary, middle, and high school level. We currently do this, but we want to make sure that we're consistently doing this across the school division at each level. And then lastly, develop an appropriate measure of workplace readiness skills for middle and high school students that accurately reflects demonstration and mastery of these competencies. You've heard Dr. Guy and Dr. Vladu say this several times. Our kids are wonderful and can pass a lot of tests. We want to make sure that they have the opportunity to demonstrate mastery of the other competencies. We have a lot of work ahead of us to reach these objectives, and I'm hopeful that one outcome of this group will be steps in place to move us in the right direction to support these three goals. And then last but not least, we've had three meetings so far with our Business Advisory Group. The May 11 meeting, again, was an introductory meeting. Each member in the group, and Dr. George will remember this, when we asked you two questions, we asked you, when you were in high school, what were your career plans? And then the second question was, how did that work out for you? So I would ask everyone at the table, think about, you know, what your best laid plans were when you were in high school. And quite honestly, the only person at the table that said, I wanted to be blank, and that's how it worked out, was Dr. George. He knew it, I think, birthed that he wanted to be a dentist, or at least in high school, that he wanted to be a dentist. But everyone else had a number of different ideas and plans. I know I had a number of different plans for myself back then, as well as everyone else in the room. And it really laid the foundation for understanding that our kids, our 15, 16, 17-year-old kids are going through the same thing right now. They're trying to find themselves, find out where they fit, what, you know, and, you know, parents, we know, are pushing them towards their passions. So it was a really effective start to the meeting. We also, during that meeting, provided information around the profile of the graduate, the strategic plan, and then we reviewed our current status. So Dr. Vladu and Ms. Hesby from CTE were there. They shared a lot of information about New Horizons, the many programs we offer there, as well as CTE courses, and what's the percentage of our kids in those courses. So we also shared the Good Life Solution video that we shared, I think, with the board a while back, from New Horizons, which was, it's a really inspirational video showing kids going after their passion. And then we also shared the signing, the letter of intent version for businesses that was done. So a lot of information we shared with that group. The August 14 meeting, again, mainly sort of reviewed the agenda. We brainstormed some goals and developed specific action steps. It was a really productive meeting, because we basically pushed all the tables together, got out some chart paper, and just started sketching some early wins that we could identify. We also received some feedback from them during that time as well. The 28th meeting is where we reviewed some of the specifics. So for instance, the team is preparing a video series that will showcase a young person that's on the job now, but really sharing what their path was to get to where they are now, and that's going to be focused on manufacturing. We're also working on scheduling career fairs. Again, our schools do a great job of scheduling career fairs, but we want to ensure that we have all 16 career clusters represented there, and our business communities certainly can help us with that. And then finally, we developed a database for identifying and collecting contact information for classroom speakers, career participants, and mentors. And Dr. Guy went into great detail in talking with this group so that they can understand sort of what the differences are between job shadowing and mentoring, et cetera. So we feel like we're off to a really good start with this group. This is sort of a preliminary presentation information. I'll be providing a full executive report later in the school related to this goal. So I will take any questions or concerns at this time.
I just, the one thing I just have to say is that, you know, the work you've done, the staff has also done this too, but the work you've done in building relationships within our business community, the energy you put into that, not just connecting with parents and families, but also the way you connect with the business community, kudos to you, because I'm sure it was very easy to walk up to some of these folks and say, will you be part of this? And they were, you had already built that relationship with them, so they felt comfortable and confident and trusted, and what they were going to be doing was going to be valued.
I appreciate your comments, Mark. I think the most important thing is the businesses and the parents and the people in our community, they all want to help. That's why this is such a special place. Sometimes they just, you have to help them figure out where they fit in to give you that information, and they all want to help. And we have folks, we have numerous folks from the chamber involved in this, so we're certainly looking forward to continuing with this group.
Did you have to, like, you know, take a number? How many people wanted to be on that?
No, I mean, no, I think we have, I think, you know, part of it is having a manageable group. You know, it's very difficult to have 50 people on a committee, but we have a manageable size group there.
And it's a fairly significant commitment for them as well, to have these business owners come in and meet with us, because our meetings are typically two-hour meetings, and we try to work at a time that is, works better for them. So we found that 8 o'clock in the morning is our better timeframe versus trying to do lunch meetings, because then they're in the thick of things.
Exciting. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you, Dr. Shandor, for sharing this, and this is exciting, and the board looks forward to these partnerships and the engagement, certainly, with our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we have on our agenda the, that relates to class size for Objective Five Goal for the class size report.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Dr. Jim Carroll, Chief Human Resource Officer, will give an update on class size at each level, elementary, middle, and high. All data presented is since the December 10 date, Dr. Carroll, after
Day 10.
Day 10. I'm sorry, Day 10, September 24. The storm, yes. Also, a discussion will be the goals of the school board in the context of state limitations. Dr. Carroll?
All right, thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board. In the last work session, I gave you a status report on our staffing. Tonight, I submit to you a strategic plan update for an objective under Goal Five of operational stewardship. The purpose of this objective is to monitor the board's commitment to smaller class sizes. Now, the ratio information is, Dr. Shandor mentioned, was from Day 10 of the student count, and you know that that was delayed due to the inclement weather. So this report is a little earlier than it normally would be. Okay, so to give our class sizes context, the state maximum class sizes are 24 students for kindergarten, but they can go as high as 29 if you put a dedicated parent in that class. 30 students for grades 1 through 3, and 35 students for grades 3 through 5. The class size objective is stated here on this slide. Now, resources will have to be significantly expanded to meet the new standard under the new strategic plan of at or below, as opposed to the previous goal, which set just a division average target. Therefore, this school year, staff has followed the previous targets, because we haven't committed those resources yet. Needs to be emphasized that the target ratios listed are for division averages, that there will be individual school and classroom results that differ, and all ratios are dependent on multiple factors. Decisions on shifting resources to address variances are made after taking into account enrollment variance, parent educator support, and principal and level director input. And these variances are the subject of ongoing discussions between staff and principals and can be changed as the year progresses and as enrollment numbers change. The board did not alter the secondary class size targets with the new strategic plan. The state has no class size limit for grades 7 through 12. Our division target ratio for secondary core classes is listed here. The only exception to this limit is that English classes must average 24 students. Another point of emphasis here is that allocation decisions are always subject to available resources. So let's get into the numbers. Here we have the division average class sizes listed across all levels, with the division targets and state limits listed at the bottom of the slide for comparison purposes. In elementary, we monitor individual grades, as well as K through 2 and 3 through 5 averages. In middle and high, we monitor the class sizes in the different content areas. As you can see, we are below all division targets across the board. State code requires us to provide data to the board on individual elementary classes. You'll find in your folders a supplemental list of each class as of today at the elementary level. Please note that many of those classes also include the use of parent educators, special education teachers, and reading specialists that also pull from those classrooms frequently. And as stated earlier, these numbers are monitored monthly and a subject of ongoing conversations with principals. We now turn to hysterical, hysterical, good. Historical comparisons. First elementary. Our start-of-year numbers aren't in line with the last four years with a slight decrease across the board from last year, and five grades fall within the range of the previous four years, and all averages fall well below our target ratios.
Those were hysterical.
That was hysterical. Good timing. Another metric that we are diligent about monitoring are the ratios for our Title I schools versus the others. Federal regulations require equal to lower class sizes for these classes, and as you see here, we meet the regulated class size relationship. In middle school, you'll find the current numbers in the right column. All content areas are similar to last year, with the exception of history and social studies, which is just a bit higher. And three of the four content areas, as well as the total average ranking, falls within the range of the previous four years. Now, the board usually likes to know if we have any classes that are 30 above, and we do have 12 sections across the four middle schools that have 30 students in them, and we have three sections that have 31. We're currently in communication with those principals. Many of them are advanced classes, where there is some attrition as the semester goes along, and we are still checking to make sure that everything's been balanced correctly. So we feel like we're in pretty good shape there. And in high school, more similarity to recent years, except for reductions in science and history, and the average content area, and the other two areas fall within the range of the previous four years. Now, as far as the 30-student target there, we have, and this is the first time since I've been doing this report, we have no core classes in high school with 30 students or higher. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
I'm going to respectfully sort of disagree with that last statement, because back to school night at Grafton the other night, 10th grade history teacher indicated that she had 30 students in that particular class, so.
Well, I can double-check that. That was my understanding as of, as of, now, that report came into Friday, because this was a Friday count, October 5th, but I'll double-check that.
We worked hard for that one. That costs money.
Yep, it's a difficult one. Any additional questions or comments?
Enjoy the hysterical.
Well, thank you, Dr. Carroll, for providing that information. We appreciate that. It was a great report. And next, we have, our last topic is the report on the recess committee. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you provide more details.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Candy Skinner, Director of Elementary Instruction, will provide a brief update on the work of the recess committee. This will include a timeline of the work completed and overview of the committee's work and next steps. Ms. Skinner?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to provide you with a brief overview of our recess committee work.
All of tonight.
All right. So this is a timeline, and this slide provides just a timeline of our work from the date when the recess bill was enacted. The information in blue indicates the events that have taken place since my last update, which was on the 17th of September. So the committee met on September 20, and during that meeting, I reviewed the committee goal of providing a recommendation to division staff regarding the addition of recess time within the instructional day. We spent a majority of that time reviewing parent and teacher survey data. Then in small groups, we got together and we summarized survey data by grade level, and we looked for some common themes. We looked for any dissenting opinions within the narrative, and any a-hahs that were noticed within the survey comments, and that's a picture there of our committee on that day working, members of our committee. And then the group was asked to continue reviewing survey results between that September 20 meeting and the meeting that was held just this past Friday, October 5. And at that meeting, we conducted a carousel activity, which you see here, and that is where members of our committee reviewed and shared any additional a-hahs that they might have identified during that time between the two meetings within the survey data. The committee also reviewed overall final survey results, and that's what you see here. The data here is a summary of parent and teacher preferences in regards to increasing recess time. The preferred option for each group is indicated by a percentage, but there were some data pieces that were so close that we thought it was important to really highlight both areas. So you'll see some, like, first-grade teachers, you'll see 42.5 and 42.5, because there was no clear area that prevailed there, so. All right. And during the meeting, principals on the committee provided information on scheduling considerations for each of the three recess options. They shared information on how each model could impact the delivery of required services and the challenges each option presented within the instructional content blocks. For example, each school has a For example, each school has a limited number of staff members to provide required services such as special education, reading, English language services. Further complicating this is the whole idea that we really don't want teachers pushing in or pulling out during that first level of instruction, that first tier of instruction with students. Additionally, many schools provide students with enrichment activities such as STEM and character development during the school day. And these programs could also be impacted by, by this. Lastly, the principals shared considerations regarding playground space and timeframe allocations. I do think it's important to note though that this information was shared not to exclude any options that were, that are being offered, but to provide the committee with an understanding of the implications for each choice.
And if I can interject, Candy?
Yes.
What you're looking at right here is one of our elementary school schedules. So as you take a look at that, you can see where they're having literacy instruction, where math instruction occurs, where lunch is, where recess is, where their resource class is. And so as you take a look at it, it's almost like a Sudoku puzzle in terms of when you're pushing in and pulling out different staff members throughout. And so that was one of the examples that was used so that the committee could see the various places where instruction occurred and where people might push in or pull out.
What do you mean by that?
So, for example, if I'm a special education teacher in, at Waller Mill, Waller Mill has two special education teachers and those two special education teachers cover kindergarten through sixth grade. And so for the, all the students that are in their building and their services that the, the student is required to receive, they set up the schedule. So you can look at that and see, not everybody has literacy instruction at the same time because if I'm going in as a special education teacher to support literacy instruction, I can't be in all grade levels at the same time. So when the school builds the master schedule, they've got to build it around when services are pushed in and pulled out without impacting the first instruction. So I don't want to pull a student out for services when first instruction is occurring. So, so it's, it's just the way they have to set up the schedule so that their support staff can provide those services.
What do you mean by first instruction?
First instruction is if I'm delivering, if I'm teaching a lesson and it's the first time we've taught, I'm trying to think of a particular topic that we might be going through and it's the first time I'm teaching it in class.
Set.
I don't want us, I don't want you as a student to not be there for the first instruction so that you're, you might be getting support services, but you've missed the, the core instruction, the first instruction that I've given the class. So then we've got to catch you up on that. So we try to have our support services come in as, it might be as part of a rotation in small group instruction that they're providing that service. So as the students are rotating through, they're going to get the support in one of the rotations in small group instruction rather than the direct instruction that the teacher provided.
Never thought about that, but that's, that's critical.
So a good portion of that meeting, we did spend conducting a decision analysis and we use this process, Dr. Shandor mentioned earlier, TRAGO. This is another TRAGO Ed process that we use often in our school division. The purpose is to help a group assess benefits and risks and arrive at a best balanced choice. The committee on that day was led by Kristi Pika, who you met just a few minutes ago. She reviewed and developed our criteria based on survey information, principal considerations, and then any additional information that the committee wanted us to consider. And she used that in the decision, helped us use that in the decision-making process. So the committee will meet again to, on the 18th and that's where we will finish the decision analysis. Unfortunately, we didn't get all the way through it, but we will hope to finish it that day. And as I shared before, I hope that the committee will come to a recommendation on that date. That recommendation will be shared with Dr. Shandor and then we will work to develop an SREG around that.
A superintendent's regulation. That's where you give more specificity to say what expectations are, what the expectations are.
And then as I shared before with you guys, I have asked the elementary principals to be prepared to move forward with those changes to the extent possible in their buildings. No later than the end of quarter two is what I've, I've asked for them to do. So that really concludes my update this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So that would be the impact, I guess. So let's say the, the committee comes back with a recommendation based on the feedback and the surveys and such and our staff, you guys, all look at the recommendation and go, you know, this is just, this is going to have some impact in areas or the day or the, our district is a school division. Then will y'all take that recommendation and then kind of go back to that group and say, well, we really can't do this, but we might be able to do this? I guess, because the impact, it's going to have an impact, I mean, on time, in class.
So one of the things with a decision analysis where you're listing the different criteria is, is you look at all the different pieces that are part of the decision that you make. And so as an example of a couple of the items, the parent survey results are one of the criteria. Teacher survey results are part of the criteria. The, the impact that it might have on required services that you have to deliver are part of the criteria. But what we shared with the committee is that ultimately, as they make their recommendation, as we go through the decision analysis and they make their recommendation, there could be some options that they ultimately recommend that one of our smaller schools that has only two special education teachers or only one reading specialist because the majority of our schools have one reading specialist except for our Title I schools. And then we have two of our larger schools that have one and a half reading specialists. So a school that could not make it work, that there might be staffing ramifications, then that's where Ms. Skinner used to the extent possible, that they would try to do to the extent possible. And then we would have to have conversations in the budget process of do we, do we make that decision? So, and as an example to the committee, we talked about what an FTE typically costs the division. And so if they were to make a choice that would have that, ultimately, it would be a larger decision that would have to be made in the budget process to move forward with that. But that's, that's only with, and again, that's not all schools because some of the schools could, could make a lot of the options work. It's, it just depends on the staffing, particularly in some of the smaller schools.
Some of it may just be a little tiny tweak and-
Absolutely.
And it's corrected-
Absolutely.
To what we now have as an expectation versus, okay, makes sense.
So let's park there for a second. And I may, if I'm getting ahead before the, before I should be, then follow me and let me know. We're hoping for a recommend, we hoping for a recommendation by the 18th from that meeting. And based on what you just said, where it may work for some schools and not the other, or is it, are you going to leave it up to the schools to implement it how they see fit? Or is it going to be one standard recommendation? And if, if it doesn't fit a school, then that's when you review alternative options? Are you going to leave it up to the principals to sort of figure it out?
Okay. I was just going to say, so ultimately, it's, so we are a little bit ahead of ourselves because we don't know what decision or outcome they've made. The, the committee has not completed that process. So we don't know where they are. We do know that some options will be very difficult for some schools. And so without the, without the budget allocation necessarily for some outcomes, there may be some schools that cannot make all grade levels work. For example, if, if they were to say, we want this at all grade levels, they may not be able to make that work this year without staffing.
So I'm confused. I keep hearing the budget. How is this impacting the budget or vice versa?
So I'll go back to the master schedule that we were looking at for one of our schools. So at one of our smaller schools, you would have two special education teachers and you would have one reading specialist. So if we were to add additional recess time into the schedule and Jim and I are the two special education teachers and Candy is the reading specialist, all those individuals have to push in or pull out at a particular time to provide the services that are required for those students. And so if you have additional blocks of time where you're pulling students out, because there's only three of us, we may not be able to hit all six grades with pulling students out for those additional blocks of time or for the extended blocks of time if it's, so that's the reason we're talking about. For some schools, there may be budget implications simply from the standpoint that we don't have the people to cover the grades and provide the services that we're required to provide.
So with the state coming down and saying you can take this away from instructional time, did they provide some type of template to follow or some type of guidelines? I mean, they, they, they had to look at this before they, before they signed the bill. They, so did they come up with something for the school districts to follow or did they just sign the bill and say, do it if you want?
We get unfunded mandates all the time.
That's what they're called.
It's, it's an unfunded mandate. And again, what the state said is you can use this time, you can use, you can count recess now as instructional time. There were school divisions in the state that weren't even providing 20 minutes of recess because they didn't have time in their school day to do it. And so, so the state said you can use the recess to count the instructional time to get your full minutes in that you are required by the state to do. They didn't mandate that we have to have a certain amount of recess. So they would say that's your issue to resolve. They wouldn't even probably consider it an unfunded mandate. They would say that's your choice to do and so you have to figure out how to provide the resources.
Okay, so now I'm confused even further. So currently, let's say we have 20 minutes.
We do. We have 20 to 30 minutes in all of our elementary schools.
Not counted as instructional time, right?
You can count it as-
Yes, not counted or yes counted?
Previously, previously, no.
Okay.
Then your legislation allows you to count it before you cannot count it as instructional time. You can now.
So we've got that 20 to 30 minute buffer out there. Okay, so based on what you just said and, and I'm assuming this is based on your interpretation of the law or the mandate, was that schools can now count that 20 to 30 minute buffer as part of instructional time, which means to me that they could take that away if needed?
No, I don't think so. I think all they're saying is you can count it as instructional time, which means if you're trying to meet the number of minutes that the state says you have to meet, you, a school no longer has the excuse to say, we can't make recess 20 minutes or longer because we don't have time with the rest of our minutes. Minutes for us are not an issue. We, we typically build in additional minutes for the snow days and the state's requirement for core instructional minutes, we're good there too. So it's not so much minutes, it's the services that we have to provide and providing those services to all students with the staff that you have in the building.
I will share, I'm excited, I mean, if I can speak for just a minute. I was excited and have been. I think the committee is in full support-
Yeah.
-of, of adding additional recess time. Right now, we're just trying to figure out what we can make work within our buildings without, as you said, having to add additional funding, you know, or request additional funding to do that. I think everyone at that table, parents and administrators, know that we appreciate the state giving us this opportunity. I think that we are just trying to work out the logistics of it. I, you know, at 30 minutes, I think we felt very confident about that. It's really just, you know, looking at the other two options around the table and really having-
Being thorough in the approach.
Right. Just, we just don't want to do something and then realize we can't make this work and we have children in special education that can't get their resources. We just really want to be thoughtful on that approach before, and that's why we want to complete that decision analysis. I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident we can finish that in two hours and hopefully we can have an answer.
And the other piece was even the survey data. Not only were, were parents in favor of extending recess, but teachers were as well. They weren't just, they just weren't necessarily in agreement to the amount except in K2. If you looked at K2, you'll notice there was greater agreement in K2 because in K2-
Those are the ones at the top. You'll see that-
Yes, yeah. So for parents, it was the 40 minute or the 220 because that was collapsed into one question. That's where the parents reside at all grade levels. And for teachers, as you can see in K2, it's pretty evenly split between 30 and the 220 or 40 minute option. At the third through fifth grade level, the teachers are predominantly in the 30 minute range. So as you look across the board, even the survey results share with us that both staff and parents are in favor. And so, and so we'll work to add time to recess. That's not a question. It's just trying to work through the logistics. If it becomes a larger, if that's the outcome, then we've got to figure out how do we make it work in those smaller schools.
I get all that.
Yeah.
And I appreciate everything that you guys have done. Just one more question. So you, you were saying, you said earlier, you hope to have recommendations by the 18th to send to the superintendent so he can do his, what do you call it, SREGs?
SREGs. I think of it almost as a standard operating procedure.
With hopes of implementing it by the end of quarter two?
Well, I've actually asked the principals to be prepared and so that was, that was one of the-
That was my question. So if there is a recommendation with hopes that it would be implemented at, by the end of the second quarter, is there, is there a possibility to give the principals leeway to implement it sooner or is it just going to be a drop, is it going to be a drop dead date?
Again, I think part of the challenge here is we have different schools, different sizes, different staffing. So once we've worked through all those nuances, that we can move forward, absolutely.
It's just taking, it's a matter of taking that schedule right there and just trying to figure out where to slide in the things.
I'm excited and I appreciate everything that you guys have done.
Thank you.
I had a little bit of an issue with the way the questions were written, but I got past that. The data speaks for itself, so I'm just excited to see what the recommendations are going to be.
Thank you.
So the 18th is basically the final recommendation on this thing?
Yeah, we'll finish the decision analysis on the 18th. That is our hope. Again, I can't ever predict, you know, because the committee this time really spent a lot of time, they had a lot of questions. We get wonderful input from our parents on the committee, but it, they really appreciated all of the information, seeing the schedule, looking at all the different pieces that go into creating a master schedule. And so we took the time to answer those questions. So we didn't get quite as far as we wanted to, but I think it was good conversation. You know, we don't want to rush those conversations. We want them to be informed.
That's great. Is this schedule sort of the same across all schools?
It's, it, it looks similar in that you would see their different colored blocks. They may have things in different places. Now, their literacy blocks, we specify in the division the amount of time for literacy instruction and for math instruction.
And this one is actually Yorktown Elementary Schools.
This is Yorktown Elementary School.
Because you'll see the magnet with the project lead the way at the bottom. That's different.
Yeah.
At that school, that's part of their magnet program that no other schools have. If you look at Waller Mills, this is kind of a little different.
And they all use different colors, so, so this is-
Yes, it's this, it's, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that report. It was a great report and I want to thank the committee, but not only that, but all the people that took the survey. It was, it was parents, it was teachers. There were almost 80% of our teachers in the elementary level that, that took that survey and participated and that was, that was a big thing too because we're covering all of our stakeholders.
How many people told anything, including?
I don't have to mention, but I can, I can provide that.
It's not important.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that report. So, so the last thing is there, our adjournment, but before we do that, I want to mention that Ms. Haywood wasn't able to make it tonight. She'd had a minor procedure, it was on her shoulder, but she's doing well. I spoke to her this evening and she hopes to be back at our, our next regular meeting. So we'll be back on Monday, October 2nd at 7:00 PM for our regular school board meeting and if no one has any other further questions or comments.
October 22nd.
22nd. Did I say second? I'm sorry. Did I miss that?
I'm going back in time.
It's October 22nd. October 22nd at 7:00 PM is our regular school board meeting. So have a great week. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.